Just talked to you again. Lord, we want to thank you for the day, the beauty of the day. Especially want to thank you for the new year. We just ask Father that you would help us be good to ourselves and forgive ourselves for the mistakes we've made last year. We ask that you would help us to walk with you in a better way this year so that we don't make those mistakes again. We seek your guidance, we seek your love. More than anything, Father, we want to see this be a new year that is, that is full of blessings. And Father, for that, we just invite you to be here and, and guide each of us throughout the evening and throughout the days ahead. In Jesus' name, amen. Bless you all.
Reverend?
Thank you, sir.
Item number three is audience participation. If you wish to speak on a posted agenda item, please contact the city secretary and she will have a little thing you can fill out. You're welcome to speak on any agenda item that is posted. Item four is the consent agenda. A is action regarding minutes to December 6th. B, we will pull. We will pull B and not discuss that tonight. That will come up at a future council meeting. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as long as it isn't.
All right, second. Cast your votes, please. Let the record reflect, we do have a full house. We have a quorum and a full house. Thanks for coming, y'all, and happy new year. Item five, this is a good one. Recreation of parks and work staff for our Christmas Eve excitement. Director of Public Works, Randy Newsom.
Thank you, Mayor. We want to recognize these guys that were tasked with the unfortunate call of duty on Christmas Eve. Those guys were out there from, oh, I guess about nine, nine-thirty till three o'clock in the morning getting a water main leak fixed. In my entire career, 36 years, I think this is the third Christmas, either Christmas Eve or Christmas Day, but first one that's really during that kind of temperatures that those guys were out in. So, we want to recognize these guys. They did a great job, got it fixed in a timely manner. I was really shocked they got it done that quick, but they didn't get the water restored and got everybody back in and the road safely sanded and, and repaired. So, I'll call their names. From the water department was Jonathan Reams. You guys will stand up.
Yeah.
Jeremy Cutler. Wes Horton. Jeremy Matthews, don't think he's here. And from the streets, we had Colton Reasoner and Juan Perez. So, those guys are not here, but they were there. So, we had to have those guys out.
That is a tough job. That is not a fun job. And remember how cold it was? It was really cold. It wasn't a day like today, so.
And that wasn't, and that wasn't the only major water leak they dealt with over the holidays either.
Was it Tuesday last week?
Yes.
Another leak that was...
Yeah, that wasn't a leak. That was a gusher.
But as far as that, that really severe stuff at night, that's, that's when it's really bad.
That's hard to do.
Well, thank you, guys. We do appreciate it. Appreciate your dedication to the city. Item number six, citywide customer satisfaction survey results. Ron Gailey. Ron, come on up.
I'm glad to be able to present to you all today. Hopefully, this will show up on the screen here and up here soon. Okay, we got it all the way around, too?
Yep.
Good. So, this city, this survey was kicked off, as you know, a few months back. I met many people at the Texas Municipal League Conference and, and then shortly thereafter, as a matter of fact, before I even was able to leave the state, I was here visiting with you and kicking off a survey. And it was a very collaborative effort. And we got a very good response rate. This is going to be small, and so I'll just talk to it a little bit, but we got 865. Why is this being a little bit slow? Oh, no. Okay, here we are, back. We, we got a complete, a number of 965 completed surveys. You figure, I don't know how many children you have in Saginaw, but maybe we have 40% of children or so. That would be probably reasonable. And so, you probably got pretty close to an eight to nine percent response rate of your citizens participating, which I think is pretty good. And, and what I have found is that when we do this in cities multiple times, we normally find that response rate just goes up, up, up as people get used to doing it, and we keep the surveys short and simple. And so, we're in a good place there. We did it throughout the city. We asked people where they lived, one, two, three, or four, in the different areas. As you see, we got pretty good response rates in areas one, two, and three, and area four, which is more commercial, far fewer. And some people indicated they were outside of the city boundaries, and we removed them so they're not in the study. And, and so, they're here, though. They, I mean, we let them go to the end. Also, we asked, there were a few things we did to make sure that everyone in the survey belongs to Saginaw. We asked for their zip code, and some gave funny zip codes, and we removed them. We also looked to see where the survey was taken. If they were, as long as, as long as they were in the United States, we let them do it because people can be on vacation. But if they were out of the country, I pulled them. So, we got some from China, you know, and, I mean, it's like it's posted, right? And so, we got, on your website, and so, people from China and other places took it. They're out. And so, we've done it. We did a fair amount just to assure that all the 965 belong, and they're the right ones. Also, I read through all of the comments. There were a lot of comments, and if there was anything that was funny or suspect, I removed them. Funny and suspect would be, they, they were just strange. They, they had no bearing on your city, and so, but there was only one or two of those. So, you have really clean data. I feel good about that. Demographically, it came in very, very nice. We have people across age groups, as you can see, more in the 55 to 74 age group, but really a nice balance across age groups. Reasonably good male, female. It's, women are just more likely to take the survey than men in almost every city and community, and 60-40 split is fairly normal. I've had one where I, we could only get 25% of the males. It was a primarily black community, and that was tough. Now, I know, and we'll have to do that differently in those kind of communities, but you did really, really well. Years in the city, some have been here a short amount of time, some have been here 20 years or longer, and you do, we do really well. We do have a lot of people 20 years or longer, but in general, we can slice it by people who've been here shorter, those with children or not. In this case, 55% had no children in the home, and it was primarily white. We did get Hispanics quite a few, 13%, but we should have had more than that. And so, the next time we do this, we want to do better Hispanic outreach. We did a lot. We tried a lot. We're going to try some new things next time we do this so that the Hispanic outreach is more effective.
What can you do differently?
I, we'll brainstorm, but I think that we could speak with opinion leaders within the group, if there are those, and ask them to encourage. We might even go to churches or whatever, right, and have them encourage. So, there's some things that we did. We did posters, I'm sorry, we did postcards and, and posters that were posted in apartment complexes, but we didn't get much from that. So, it's just learning how to, how to reach them in a better way, which we'll try to do. Okay. The first question, this is really an important question, and it is, would you refer the city of Saginaw to a friend or family member as a good place to live? And across the top, we asked from zero to 10, what rating would you give? You see, there's a lot of people who gave fives or sixes, and even more who gave sevens or eights, and quite a few who gave nines and tens. And this is not bad. I've seen worse. It's, it's not wonderful, so that you have quite a people in, who are a little, in the, kind of in the ambivalent middle. And, and I think the, the goal over the coming few years, I know to turn a ship and so forth is hard, but the goal would be to move fives and sixes to where there are more sevens and eights, and move sevens and eights to more nines and tens. And so, it's just to kind of shift that up. But in general, you're more positive than negative. The number 20 over here, when we took both positives and subtracted both negatives, the difference is 20. And so, so there's, you're more positive than negative, and a lot who are, I'd say, are in the ambivalent middle. But the next question I would like to talk about is the direction of the city. How are things going in the city? Have things changed in the past three years? Have they changed and improved, stayed the same, or changed and gotten worse? And here you have a mix, right? So, you do have some who say it's gotten worse, 38%. By the way, I live in a small town. It's, it's this and worse. So, you're doing, like, this is not bad. This is, this is fair. You know, I would just, I'd say it's fair. I've seen stronger, I've seen worse, and you're kind of strong in the middle. But what I like to see here is the number who are saying we're going the right direction. So, that's very positive, and, and I think that's a good thing to note, that in general, people think you are going the right direction. There are some who think you're going in the wrong direction, and we'll talk about that a bit. Compared to other cities, they tend to think you're about the same or better. Very few think that you're worse than other cities around you. And I think that's also a very positive thing, in that there's room to improve, and I think you all have heard it, but I think the direction is positive. And I feel that, you know, you're going, you've improved or stayed the same is pretty strong, and so, you know, that, that's the news I would take out of it. We did it by the different zones, and so, this is the same data. Are we going the right direction or the wrong direction? And by zone, we see area one and four, primarily four being the weakest, and the four is your industrial area, right? So, the people who live in four are, maybe they need a little bit more attention and affection, but they're not bad, just slightly less. And also, has it gotten worse or improved? The only ones who've really gotten worse, they tend to be area four as well, you know, so that's an area just to be aware of for, if, if, if you were to do personal outreach at all, that might be a good place to do it. Or if you were to look specifically at what could be done in an area of the community, you'd probably see some lift there, although that's probably going to be a tougher area to do it in, so I acknowledge that challenge. Now, I'm going to pause right here before I go on to other things and see if you have any questions before I go any further. And by the way, you can interrupt at any time. I don't mind that at all. Okay. Now, the next section that we went through is, is, it's the next five tabs going down. And there are many things in a city to look at, and we took about 50 of them and broke them into five major categories. And the first one was city facilities and events, followed by the benefits of living in the city, followed by growth and development concerns, followed by safety and security concerns, and followed by city operations. So, so just know that we, there's like 50 things, but you can't ask people about 50 things very easily. And so, we broke them into these five major categories and asked. Now, the, the city facilities and events, what we asked people to do was to look over these city facilities and events and tell us which ones were most important to them. They could pick two. And then, if they did pick two, we then said, how's the city doing on these things? So, they're, so on the left, you see in rank order what's most important to them, and then to the, to the right of it, you see their ratings if they considered it important. And then, you look at areas where maybe there's a bounce in poor, very poor, and you go, well, maybe that's an area to focus on, especially if it's important. So, I'm going to say, like, the community center was least in importance, and, and therefore, and you're doing okay to, for them. But the services provided by the aquatic center is also quite low, but some more frustrated people. On the other hand, it's rated quite low, so maybe you don't focus on that right now, right? But the things to focus on, then, would be the city parks, but it looks like you're doing pretty good, and the walking trails, which it looks like there's some room to improve, right? So, out of this group, that's the way it is. Any thoughts or concerns with this? So, this makes it very, very helpful. The library's doing great, you know, the farmers market looks like it's pretty good. City events, maybe there's a little bit of room to improve, so I think that's helpful. City benefits. Now, the benefits are things that rarely do you actually create or do, but you encourage it. And so, the small-town feel or a great place to raise children, these are things that people often want to rate the city on, but you don't have as much control over them. But you do in the long run, as you kind of manage and direct and create the city. It's a long, so the small-town feel is very important to people, and it looks like it's an area where there's some concerns. And that could be with the events that you do that create the small-town feel. It could be creating walking and mingling areas or whatever you might want to do, but it looks like that could be an area to improve upon. And some people are concerned with teen and youth services, but it's just a handful of them, and so, you might want to address it. I can understand wanting to do so, but you, you may benefit by focusing on some things at the top.
Ron, with adult services, would that include senior? How is that defined? Like, senior...
No, it's not defined here. We didn't define it all, and we just worked with your staff to create it. It's a really good question.
Maybe in the future, we could add senior services or something like that.
That's exactly what we could do. Yeah. Growth and development, now, I will, oh, go ahead.
Mayor?
To the right where it says demo filters.
Correct. Do you want me to explain that?
What? Yes.
This is cool. So, on the right-hand side, if you say, yes, but how do moms with kids feel about this? You could click on gender and turn off the males. So, you got the females, and you could go children, and you could grab those who have children in the household. And then, immediately, you're looking at the results from moms with kids. And you can do that Hispanics. You could do that people who lived in the city a long time versus people who have not lived in the city very long. And you can begin to get, paint a picture of who is it that feels certain ways.
Is it possible for you to demonstrate that on there?
So, I just did the moms with kids, and so, the results you're seeing now are moms with kids, and they were much more interested in this being a great place to raise children, even more so. Now, I'm going to turn off the females, and I'm going to turn off the kids at home. So, this, now, we're back to everybody. And now, I'm going to go time in the city, and we're going to go with the old timers, and I'm going to get rid of everybody who hasn't been in here 20 years or more. The people who lived in the city a long time, they don't feel much different in this case, on this particular set. They're really not much different, are they? Although city green spaces came up a little bit. So, with the old timers, the, the green spaces came, and that's probably pretty logical. You go, yeah, I see that. And I'm going to do that, well, on, on any of them, though, it's just as easy as just saying, oh, I'd like to look at this group, and turning off certain ones and leaving the others.
Okay. So, it, if you choose something to the right, it's going to tell you about all of those choices?
So, that's exactly, any, anything that you turn on, it will, it'll filter by those groups.
Oh, okay.
So, these are people 15, 15 years or longer, and you might see that the sample size has come down. It's 405 because we're no longer looking at everybody, which was 965.
But it tells you how they felt about every category.
About everything on this, right?
So, you can't ask just about one category.
Well, you get the one category when you do it.
I, I guess there wouldn't be any need to if, if, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So, anybody can access the interactive information from our city website, is that correct?
So, so if you, once you conclude to publish it on the website, people could do this.
Okay.
Uh-huh. And most cities are publishing it. We've had some who've gone with PDF hard copy, which I could help you do, but most cities simply have just published a link with some commentary from the city.
Wouldn't want to do that. There's no reason why we wouldn't, right? Put it out there for everybody?
Yeah, I don't see why you wouldn't.
I don't see why we wouldn't.
It's public information anyway, right? And then, and then it allows, it allows you to refer to it routinely.
Our citizens paid for it, so they should have access to it.
I think with the, the filters and everything, it makes it more valuable.
Yes. Growth and development is the next area. This is always an area that in almost all cities is rated poorly because they're concerned with growth. And it is a harder, it's a hard topic, and this is the way to. But also, in growth and development, not everything is created equal. And so, you can look at some things that are rated lower in importance in general to people, and some things that are rated very high. And this is common, what I see here, was, is they want to assure that growth, okay, but let's make sure the infrastructure's in place, and that we don't mess up the infrastructure by doing it. And, and I think it's just a, you know, a call for, let's be sure that we don't mess it up for everybody by doing, by doing the growth, and that's a very common thing. And the second one is ensure maintenance of the infrastructures in place. So, those are two really high issues, followed by simply managing the growth and density of the city. I'm going to come back to that in a little bit. Well, maybe I'll just mention it now. Managing the growth in the city suggests they just really do hope it's managed. You know what I mean? Because it can get out of hand in a hurry in some cities. My city's kind of that way. It's out of control. And so, now, they're really busy trying to, to address it. And, and so, this is, I just, your, your permission, I think, granted to focus on those things and say sorry and tell the infrastructure's handled, or until we've done X or Y, we're going to focus on the infrastructure and make sure it's right.
My question, the infrastructure, that was one that stuck out to me, the first two. You know, we mentioned drainage, water, but also mentioned streets. I'm guessing in my head that it's mainly, their concerns are mainly from streets, but I don't know that. And the reason I say that is because we spent millions of dollars in the last 10 years on water and drainage. We, we made that focus, emphasis of focus in the last 10, 12 years, I guess, something like that. So, it's better than it was. I know there's places that don't flood that used to, but I'm just wondering, how can we drill down better in this?
There's a couple of things I want to say. First of all, what you have here is either a problem or a misunderstanding. And if it's a problem, okay, you can, maybe there's, maybe it's a mix of both. Maybe there's some problems that still need to be addressed, and maybe there's some misconceptions that need to be addressed as well. And then, then you can communicate or let them know the progress that's been made and give some green lights and thumbs ups for the, all the things that are going well, and then if there are concerns, you can say that that's next on our priority, kind of a thing. So, I think it gives you cover to do the right thing, either by communicating or getting across, and it sounds like you've done some good things here, and which is great.
I have a question, sir. I think, and, and I'm kind of like Todd, you know, I don't fully understand maybe what some of these statements mean. If we do, well, I know we plan on doing another survey in the future, but, you know, on my iPhone, I have this little circle with an eye on it where you can click for an explanation of...
Of what's intended to be...
Of what's intended, a little bit more of a definition of what these statements are, and then maybe have a comment at the end of each of these sections instead of just one place to comment at the very end.
Correct. I can see, well, it makes a very long survey. I like, I understand the sentiment, but it takes a 10-minute survey and makes it a 30. So, you have to be very, very careful about that, but the point is well-taken. I love the idea of, of if they don't know what it means, they can click and get some insight on that. That's a really good suggestion. Safety and security. In general, things are going pretty well on safety and security, but there's some issues. Now, one of them that is, what was rated higher, most important, by the way, and not necessarily the biggest concern, but most important, was to assure that crime and theft is prevented. So, crime and theft prevention initiatives. This isn't saying we have a lot of crime and theft. It is saying, though, that they want to be safe and, and make sure that those things are dealt with. We were talking about that, and part of this could be a perception, you know, nationwide, we see a lot of news about crime, and we see a lot of news about the problems cities are having, and so, part of it might be based on what they're hearing and not what, on an actual problem, but they're concerned. And so, this is one that shows the level of concern, so it might be communications goes with it. The police services are rated really well, and fire's really good. Traffic enforcement is probably more of a local area in certain areas. It's not important to everybody, but it is to some.
I had a question, and this is for the folks here. Solicitors and panhandlers. Do we have panhandlers in the city of Saginaw? I don't know if I've seen it.
Yes.
Yeah, we do. Typically, they're on Blue Mountain Road.
There's one that sits up at Walmart all the time. I call, P. D. every time.
You'll see them at Walmart on occasion, but at Blue Mountain Road at 8:20, we deal with them on a pretty regular basis as well.
And there's a couple that take their kids out there and send them, make you feel sorry.
Oh, right.
Yeah, here the other day, I guess about two months ago, there was one on our side of Blue Mountain, right there. As you come out of Highland Station, she had a little thing with her daughter sitting there, right there on the corner.
He's, he's out in the country over at Saginaw, so you can see that. It's okay.
City operations, this is the same thing where you're able to get the prioritization and maintaining and repairing streets, and it's, I want to talk about this next one, minimizing property taxes for city services. And you look at that and you go, oh, man, they're not willing to pay for anything around here, right? And so, I, I appreciate that, but I do want to point something out on this same page. At the very bottom, we have reduced the size of the government, even if it means reduction in city services or programming. Not very many people think that as being important at all. So, I don't think that there is a groundswell. People think that the money is being, you know, like, this is not worth it, and we should scale back. That's not what I'm seeing at all. Instead, what I'm seeing is just to make sure the property taxes we do spend are wisely used and, and to minimize it as much as is reasonable. You know what I mean? So, I get a sense out of it, a wise stewardship, more of a response rather than, oh, you've got a problem going on here. And, and that's the way I would read it when I see this, especially since we have both of them on the same page, and they're not saying it's time to cut back, right? I don't think you should even attempt to cut back, right?
I kind of thought that minimize property taxes for city services, manage the city budget, and reduce the size of government, even if it means reduction. I, I was really confused by those three statements, and I think I brought that up in my list of questions when we were evaluating this survey. I never really understood why those three things had to be broken out. You know, it just, it's kind of like saying the same thing three different ways.
I guess, you know, and maybe the next time we get rid of one of them, or we get rid of, we, we simplify it. So, I, I see where you're coming from on that, and, yeah, I'm with you. Maybe think about what we want to evaluate in this.
Manage the budget would probably just sum it up easiest of all.
Yeah. Okay, now, as I mentioned, there were like 50 attributes that were prioritized, and everybody rated 10. They went through, they picked two out of each area. We put all 10 together, and we said, now, what are the three most important ones out of these 10? So, really, out of almost 50 attributes, we're getting everyone's top three. That's on this page. This page is a little bit busy, but it's perhaps the most important page in the, in the document. And so, what we have on the left is what's most important overall, and then the ratings. The ratings are, don't change from the prior pages. They're the exact same ratings as you saw on the prior pages. We just happen to have an overall prioritization. So, here, overall, is where crime and theft prevention, prevention initiatives is the number one thing that they were concerned with, followed by the infrastructure, meaning ensuring the infrastructure can handle the growth. And, and there are areas where they're not quite as, you know, sure the city's doing what they, what needs to be done. Police services is important, but the police services are rated really highly. And maintaining, repairing streets comes in as being also important. Mayor, you brought up, is, is that the streets that they're talking about there, or is it the other things? And it's hard to tell from this again, because both of them are up in there. And so, I think we should remove the streets from that if we do it again, and just have the infrastructure... the infrastructure excluding streets. And then minimizing property taxes for city services is also up there, so, but what I would say in general is, as you're a city, as you, as you plan as a city council, I would look at the top 10, maybe the top 15, and pick the three or four that maybe makes some sense to you to spend some time on over the coming two to three years, and then, and then, you know, that's where you focus. And, uh, that allows you to have, I think, cover, you present it to the citizens, you say, here's the survey results, and these are some of the things we're going to do. And although other things are important, we're going to focus on maybe some priorities here. And that should allow you to manage your budget in a way that it's, I know, I know how hard it is in Texas to manage your budget, because you can't, you can't increase it, and you've got the restrictions, it's super hard, and so that's where this might be useful to you.
Just off that base, I want to highlight a couple of things that I should have mentioned earlier. I was really impressed with police services and fire, medical services are, are swayed so high on the very good scale. I think that's a testament to our folks and their interaction with the public, because those folks have a lot of face-to-face interaction with the public, and it could be bad.
It could be bad.
It could be bad. So I'm, I was really thrilled and happy to see that, that the people appreciate that, and I just thank y'all, thank you very much for the work you do, so.
Yeah, and I also see a great ra, a great place to raise children is really high, too, and that's just really commendable. And, uh, and so, some good things here. All right. We evaluated a number of basic services, I'll let you just come back to that, I don't think we'll spend any time on it, things came pretty good. Uh, I'm going to talk about the employee contact. There was quite a bit of, um, contact with employees, 44% said they had contact with employees, if they did, we said where. And so that's on the right-hand side, I had contact with the diff, with, with the water utility building, there's a, quite a few people who did that, very few with the municipal court down at the bottom, but we haven't. If they did have contact, we asked them to evaluate the, the department, and let us know how they felt. And I'm going to show you a couple of things on this slide, there's actually different ways of looking at the data, which I won't go into in depth, but if you click to the right of it here, you see there's a subgroup of, of options that you can look at below. And so, uh, the library did really good, a lot of people, it was the highest rating, rated department of all. Fire department is super good, also very highly rated. Building inspections and permits did well, and usually that's not the case. So I want to give you guys some kudos there, but that's on courteous professional. I also want to point out one thing on this page, and that is there's two ratings, there's courteous from prof, and professional, and there, then there is, address my need or concern. In my view, everybody could score really high on courteous and professional. Like, it doesn't matter where, right? Everyone could be really high on courteous and professional, and maybe there's reasons why you can't address their need, and solve their need, but I do think there's maybe an opportunity there to bring the courteous and professional up, and to see how that might happen. And, I think that it makes sense to look at areas where we can improve. I was talking, Nick sent some ideas on how we could even look at this, and this is a page that kind of highlights, um, who's doing excellent, and where, and who's doing good, and where, and who maybe is doing acceptably, and where, and who maybe needs some improvement, and where. And so I think this is something, the data will be available to you, you can look at it, it might be good to, to periodically meet with some of the departments and figure out, how do we take it from an acceptable level up to a great level, right? How, how do we do that in the coming year or so? So I thought that was really thoughtfully done. There's more detail on these, which I won't go into detail, but we ask people to rate them from very good to, 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 good to poor, and I have pages here that show the poor ratings, that you can come back to, by being courteous and, and also by addressing needs. But I do want to mention one thing. I went to other cities, we've, we've asked this question in many cities, and I, I show on this particular slide an average of other cities. And some of them at the bottom are kind of hard in every city, you know, and, and in general, I, I would like to say that you are equal to or better than other cities on many of these attributes, that doesn't mean you shouldn't improve, and that you can improve, and that you don't want to make things better, but, um, some of the departments on the bottom are just tough in all cities, and harder to do, but that, like I said, it doesn't mean you shouldn't improve it, and I think you can and ought to consider that. We asked about new investments, so which would, we would be worth using tax dollars to develop and maintain? There were a lot of things shown, trail expansion came off very, very high, and streetscape enhancements came off high as well, that might be trees, it might be variety of things, right? Flowers, whatever you choose to do, and playground improvements, and so if, if you were wondering where to focus, there's some good ones. I know that you're going to have people asking for pickleball courts, I'd be among those at that group, but I'm sorry, it wasn't as high as other things, right? And so you might want to think where you go with this, but, or balance it out in some meaningful way. Any questions on that? Yeah, I'd have been on the pickleball court one, right. And then importance of city events, you do a variety of things as a city, some of them are just really important to the families, and that's what we see here. The Independence Day fireworks show is re, like, that's your big one, and clearly the Christmas parade is really important, but so are many of them. I wanted to say you have a lot of them, but, but there's some maybe at the bottom, that maybe we think about how to make that more relevant to more people, I don't know, but I thought this was really good.
You know, I looked at this, I did a problem with the truck-or-treat, we had 5,000 people at truck-or-treat, maybe more, it was, there were people lined up around the block, so...
There was.
I don't know how this, this is pretty...
Why is that low, right?
Yeah, it was really popular, I mean, the people just, we can't hardly serve all the people that show up.
Yeah, well, I don't know what to think, other than maybe, maybe, there you go, I don't know.
I believe that we attract a lot of people that are not Saginaw residents.
That's right, yeah, we know that, yeah.
And so they couldn't answer.
Yeah, the people who, who, who came from other places.
Came from, you know, we have, we're surrounded by Fort Worth, you know, and, so we have...
It's a big deal.
A big area of population that isn't in Saginaw, but very close.
Yeah.
And that I can't have because it's safe.
Yeah, very good.
We do have good stuff.
Yeah. No, yeah, and, and no, no, like, I think it's cool, and I, I just think it's inter, interesting to see how this came out. I thought the city cleanups was interesting to see how high that came.
Yeah.
And that might be something to explore, how do we expand that, or do something, right?
But as important as truck-or-treat is, I still see 4th of July, training grain, and the Christmas parade as being far more important to our citizens than truck-or-treat, to our citizens.
Yeah, emphasis on that fireworks, sir.
Tell us how you really feel, Nick.
Okay, I'm going to show a section here that we added, but I'm going to, I'm going to caveat it quite a bit. So we wanted to find out, what are problems in the city that should be addressed? And we gave them a list of five things, fences in disrepair, junk vehicles, stray animals, litter, and dilapidated or deteriorating buildings. And then we allowed them to type in other, and a lot of people typed in other. And when they typed in other, a lot of people put in yard maintenance and tall grass, but then they, a lot of them started talking about things that were elsewhere in the survey, such as traffic and speeding, and crime, and streets, and sidewalks, you know what I mean? Some of the things that were already there. And so, so then what I thought was, well, let's see how serious this is, because the next question after this, we said, do you have anything else you would like to tell city leaders? And you know hardly anybody commented on any of these things, right? Hardly anybody commented on them anywhere. Some did, some said, oh, there's a fence near me, or there's a, there's a building that needs to be fixed, and so I think there's some individual issues that really could use attention. But I don't see that the disrepair in general is a huge issue, but I do think it's a targeted issue, that maybe you look at and try to, to fix some things, but if people had commented on it right after seeing it, the last question, and said, yeah, this is horrible around here, I would say you should pay more attention to it, but I don't, I don't know that it's the problem that it seems to be here. And certainly the top five were just there, and they would check, 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 yeah, well, that's, that's, I would like to fix this, and so I think it's a, a casual fix rather than a serious problem.
At the bottom of that, it says none of these.
Correct, 51%.
Did they list any of what they would rather show on there?
Uh, yeah, they could type in what they would rather show, and that's exactly what the other ones are, like the yard maintenance and tall grass is typed in response.
Oh, so the none of these came with the first four or five?
None of these was one of the six options.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
None of these was one of those six options. So I might even put a comment box over to the right of this if you'd like, but I just don't see this, like, I think it's an area where you can, you can do some things, and surely you can focus on them, but I don't see it being the call to action that other things were.
So that I'm reading this right then, since you're at it, so after the top five, so yard maintenance and tall grass, that's 17% of the 51%.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Correct. No, 17% of the 49.
49.
It's the opposite of the none of these.
Okay, right.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, now, I, I purpose, purposely skipped a couple of questions, and they're the comments, but I want to take a couple of sec, minutes and talk about the comments. So, at the very end, we say, is there anything more you'd like to say? And there's a lot of comments, and we have the comments here, but I want to talk about it very briefly. There's a lot of comments, and it's hard to digest them easily, and so what we did was we grouped them into themes that people talked about. So if they talked about roads, improve the roads, fix the roads, widen the roads, add a light, things like that, then they were grouped into the roads section, which was the most common comment, by the way, was about roads. Public, uh, parks and public places, like expanding them or improving them, or thanks for the parks, or anything to do with parks is there. So you can kind of see the order in which people talked about various things, very few people, uh, said down at the bottom, yards messy, weedy, not maintained, but some did, right? Now, this is also of those who left a comment, remember there were 965 participants, but only 214 left a comment in this section? So it's kind of a, you know, 20, 25% of, is, is the percent of the quarter who gave you more comments. But it is here, and that's, the beautiful thing is you can go to anything more to say, and you, then you can click, up at the top, there's a down arrow, and you can click on any of those comments, and you can get any of the comments that have to do with that one. So for people who are talking about safety and crime, I can click on that, and I can get the comments that had something to do with safety and crime, and, and, and some sort of commentary. Also, I want to indicate to you that we know the age of the person, kind of, the age range, we know their gender, we know also how many years they've lived in the city, and we also know the area that they live in. So you can kind of go through that, and you can get a, kind of get a sense of who this is that left this comment, and the beauty of it is there's enough of them, and you won't know exactly who it is, but you'll know kind of who it is. And so, uh, I encourage you routinely, whenever you're talking about some topic, to come and grab the comments about that, and, uh, and it'll be helpful for you to have that to, to keep your minds safe around it. Now, this is only of the 214 people who had anything more to say, but right behind "refer friend" is, why would you refer the city to a friend? This one, everybody responded to it, because we asked everybody to tell us why they would refer the city to a friend. And so this is a very reliable overview of comments from everybody. And, uh, also we have down arrows and smiley faces, down arrows tend to be more concerns, smiley faces tend to be positive and pro, you know, pro things that you have to say, and it's just really happy, really positive, and your ability to get in there, if you go to the next page, you can likewise take any of these sections and do a deep dive, and see what people had to say about all of these topics, the trains, and safe and secure, and so forth. With that, I think I'm done, um, and I'm open to any more questions you might have, I probably went a little longer than you wanted, but...
Other questions, counsel? Mary, go ahead.
It's not really a question, but I found it interesting that, I think one of the very first questions, if not the first question, is like, what is your age, and how long have you lived in the city, et cetera? The two groups that answered the most were the, the ones that hadn't lived here very long, and the ones that had lived here very long. It, those two were the highest response rates. I thought that was kind of interesting, and it kind of surprised me.
No, it is interesting.
Is that typical, or, or have you ever thought about that?
Well, if you've had a lot of growth in the last four years, and it sounds like you have, I don't know if it reflects reality, or if that's an anomaly, and it, my, my suspicion is, is this is kind of how the growth stream has gone. You grew a lot 20 years ago, and you had quite a few people come, come in, but you probably didn't have a, a great deal of growth until maybe the last 10 years, and then you've had a lot more. That would be my guess, looking at the data, is that kind of how it's gone?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it just more reflects your base of people.
Other questions, counsel?
My question, so much of the survey itself, I mean, the, the data's the data, you can either believe it or not. There's no reason why not to believe it, though, it's accurate, the numbers are statistically significant and stuffs, but now the thing is, is what do we do with it? I mean, one thing is here and looking at, really, what the citizens paid for here, with their tax dollars, is us to take this information and apply it to policy and, you know, make improvements in which they want. So we got, we got to figure out how to, how to roll that into the 2023 plan.
Yeah, do we put this as a, as a work plan, a response to this, or a plan out of this survey, something like that, in the 23 work plan, is that a good way to look at it?
Absolutely, I think so.
So noted, let's put it down. Ron, thank you, sir.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure to work with you and your, your people.
You were certainly a treasure that we found at TML, one of the best things we found there.
All right, item number seven, consider acts and actions regarding, uh, annual senior citizen, non-resident membership fee and amendment to master fee schedule. For that, Mayor Prostine.
Mayor, counsel, when I first looked at this, I had some citizens talk to me that don't live in Saginaw, and they go to the center, and they were worried about paying the annual fee.
Okay, since I've done some thinking, and I've talked to some other people and everything, I called Gabe this morning, and asked him to ask Keith and Christie, or whoever, um, some different items that we need to look at first. I'd like to know how many non-residents come to the center like more than 20 times a month, or around 20 times a month, to see who the regulars are. I know we have quite a number of, of people signed up, and I think that we need to just look at maybe doing a little grant thing for some hardship, if we need to, if there's somebody that can't pay, um, and look at some other things, so I, I think I would like, I'm sure the council has some other questions, too, but I think maybe we ought to table it and see what kind of numbers we can get, because they didn't have time to do all that, there's no way they could have done it, and Gabe did give a email to Keith about it, but I think that there's a way that we could, um, help the ones that need it, so that they can have a interesting time at the senior citizens, that's part of their fun and everything, that's what most of them do, that they don't have anywhere else to go. And so we need to look at it so that they can all benefit from it, and with Christie and Keith, and Jason and Vicki, and whoever works with the seniors, maybe we can get some numbers closer before we do anything else about it.
We saw numbers about just the members, right?
Yes, just in that total of members.
200 and something that were...
Yes.
Non-Saginaw residents?
Yes. I also spoke to him about maybe, I don't know, putting a line item on the water bill for people that might want to donate to the senior citizens. Um, now, I don't want to drag, get, drag anybody down with donations or anything, but I feel, and Gabe said it would be a, on a budget, it would have to be on our budget, and approved by the city council, which I don't, that's not a big deal for anything, but I think that might be something, too, to help them out, so that they have a little bit more, because we don't, they don't really make a lot of money for anything, you know, it's not, that's not what it's there for, but I think it would help Christie out... But I think it would help Christie out with the stuff that they do and everything, and so.
Charlie. Well, my question is, if they live in Saginaw and they want to go to the rec center in Fort Worth, are they going to have to pay for that?
They are.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm talking about the hardship. The three women that I talked to, they, they didn't have a hardship. They said they knew some people that had, and they didn't tell me who they were or anything. It was at the Christmas thing, we were just talking nonchalantly, and they said it wasn't them that had the hardship. But it was some people that lived just outside of the border of Saginaw that were having hardships. And so I thought, well, I'll just do a grant or something, you know? And then I asked Keith, I think it was, or Jason, one, well, how many members do y'all have? And they said like five or six hundred. I was like, whoa, wait a minute, no, let's wait to see. Not that I don't love them all, but you know what I mean? Just something to help them out. So I agree with you also, Charlie. I, I get it. They, they need to pay something, and I get that.
You know, one thing that I thought of when you saw this is, this is where we are now. We built a new senior center, that now is going to be a lot bigger.
I know, it is. And they're going to have a lot more.
A lot more people. I can't tell how much, but it's going to grow exponentially. So that's what we need to keep in mind.
Yes. And that's, that's one thing I was saying, from here on out, they definitely need to pay, but we have some that maybe not can afford it. Now, I'm sure Christie or Keith could let us know those hardships so that we could help them out.
At least the numbers, not the names.
Pardon me?
The numbers, not the names.
Yes, yeah, no, no names, nothing.
So when, when you, when you say that, now, I guess I'm struggling here. We already know that over fifty percent of the current senior citizens going to our thing are non.
Is it at fifty percent, Chris?
It's above fifty.
Over.
It's over fifty percent.
It's over fifty percent that's non.
That's what I thought, the number's in my mind.
We got us over.
Hey, Keith's got it, hang on.
Fifty-three percent are non-resident, two hundred and seventy-six, and there's forty-seven that are resident, which are two fifty-three.
And I know this is, I can't ask, I mean, you're not going to know this number now, but out of that fifty-three percent, how many of them come more than twenty days in a month? Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So let's see, there were some things I asked Gabe to do, so.
What's the yearly, is it, what does it cost right now?
Twenty.
Twenty.
I think you'll approve twenty.
Twenty a year, twenty a month?
A year.
Twenty a year.
Year for, for non-residents.
For non-residents.
And I also think some of them thought that it was a monthly thing, because one woman said something about that, and I said, it's not monthly, that's a yearly, if I'm not mistaken. And I pointed to Gabe, and I said, hey, there's the city manager. And I don't know if she ever came, the little bitty short lady, I don't know if she ever came to you or not, but, yeah. Because I couldn't see you, you were on the other side of the thing, so.
We've offered to pay for anybody that has financial needs. We've been very clear on behalf of the city, friends that I've offered to pay for them, and nobody has taken us up on it. Everybody feels like it's a significant, I think, right, it's a significant amount, twenty dollars. Everybody loves that, right, and we do a lot for the seniors.
Yes, we do.
We did over, today was the first day, we did almost seventy memberships today alone. Seven new members that have never been there before, just handed over twenty bucks. They're like, we'll either buy them one, we don't care if you're sorry twenty. So I'm not getting that feedback that you guys are getting. Overall, I think they understand our process, our city has gone up, and therefore we have to adjust. It was very, but we didn't have to try, but twenty dollars is extremely reasonable here. And again, I do have friends that will pay for that, but nobody's taken us up for it yet. And it's, I've been very vocal about that, so.
So, well.
I think it's more of a rumor, there's a need out there versus there actually an actual.
Well, I was also contacted. I was also contacted, there were about three or four people, they said, had a need. This was twenty dollars is out, but, but again, there were no names mentioned.
Yeah, you're welcome to speak to me about that, but I don't know if anybody, any names that, that's, that hasn't been brought to my attention at all.
But, I mean, I had nothing to tell you, so it's just.
So maybe, so maybe we just, just.
But if it's four people.
Volunteer thing on the donation on the water bill, and that would just help y'all out, but it not.
Well, don't I, so, do we currently have a policy where if somebody does need help, they can fill out a form? Of course, we'd have to check to make sure that they actually do need help. Right, yeah.
We don't, I mean, we can, there are other senior centers, but do you have a financial need? Request, um, we know a committee. This is the first time we've ever charged seniors, so that's why I've been so vocal. If you have a financial need, come see me, and not, nobody has. And I've been very, very open about it, come talk to me in private. Has anybody expressed any concerns? Both of my staff members have said, not even one person. So there's nobody for me to sit down and talk to.
Right.
So I think there's a rumor that there's this need out there without their actual need, and people want twenty dollars. It's extremely reasonable.
Right, that's, that's what I was thinking. And again, we're not talking about Saginaw senior citizens. This is for other cities. We just went through what I consider a pretty rough budget thing. And, you know, we're sitting there looking at, at ways not to, to, you know, raise taxes on Saginaw citizens, and these are, these are things we have to address. It's, um, you know, it's, it's five thousand two hundred dollars. I mean, that's, that, that comes out of the budget. And so the citizens have to pay for that. And this is, and these people, the, the, the seniors, even though they are seniors, they're paying taxes in other cities. And really and truly, that's where they, if, if they don't want, if, if they like the services we're paying, I feel they need to pay the twenty dollars. If they don't like it, then they need to go to their senior citizen center in their city.
Do we know what other cities, our neighboring cities are charging for senior citizen programs for citizens and non-residents?
I do. Yes, I, I have a list. I came prepared. Keller, they charge their residents ten dollars a year, and their non-residents twenty.
I apologize for interrupting. Keller didn't charge that, but as of today, it went from ten dollars per resident and seventy dollars for non-residents.
Really?
Seventy?
They increased because they got a thirty thousand square foot senior center to build.
And I looked up.
And I should go up here and speak in the microphone, so everybody can, please, I know, I know.
You could do it, you do it at the senior center, come on.
I don't know.
We're your people, too.
I just want to make sure folks can hear.
Have you looked out for, we're, we're going to be your people pretty quick.
Okay. Um, yeah, so Keller was ten dollar, was actually free for residents and twenty dollars for non up until yesterday, today. Today, they went from zero to ten for residents and from twenty for residents to seventy for, I mean, for non, up to seventy.
Okay, um, and I did look all of this up online, so if they haven't updated their, you know, some of these might be higher now.
Well, Kristi, let's just ask you, the citizen, the centers around here, do you know how much they charge?
Yes.
Okay.
So for the most part, everybody charges, maybe not Lake Worth. Lake Worth is, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um, I live on the other side of town, so I know my side of town, I apologize. But over there, there's a lot of competition, and so there, a lot of them are in the seventy, eighty dollar range. They also charge for activities. So they do charge a lot more than we do. That's why I don't feel like the twenty dollar ask is too big of an ask at all. And we do a lot, we do a lot in our city through sponsors that I get, but we do a lot for everyone, so.
Y'all do.
Well, the question is, is twenty dollars enough?
I mean, that's, I think you're starting from nothing and asking for something, and so I think at this moment in time, twenty is enough. I think once you have your new senior center, you have more bills to pay. I am, we'll also be open more hours, would be my guess, and possibly weekends, things like that. So I, I, I would just assume you would have to go up from twenty at that point. I think right now in the rec center, going from nothing to something helps with the overhead costs, without being too excessive at first. Agreed to it, but I think right now, everybody seems comfortable the first day I announced it, that, ah, and then, and then once it's sunk in, and we've just had the talk that last week I did a Q and A before bingo, and I said, if anybody has any questions, concerns, and there are questions and concerns, well, their concerns were none, but their questions were simply things like, what's the difference between a rec center pass and a senior center pass? How do I pay? Um, but there were no concerns of, I feel like it's too much, or I'm angry at Saginaw for doing this. There was none of that, no.
Well, that's good. And I think probably the reason that Valerie and I heard these concerns is probably residents coming up, speaking on behalf of their friends. And they probably didn't even talk to them, they're just probably, you know.
They talked to me, they said they could afford it, they just said that they didn't, they knew there were some that could not afford it, is what it was there.
And I basically got the same thing.
And like I said, we just opened up the books today, and we did, um, just at seventy. I think there was thirty-seven non-residents that paid today. So then whatever that number is left over, we're Saginaw residents. There's obviously a little bit easier to do since they didn't have to pay. Um, but we turned away a large amount of people today just because we couldn't keep up with the numbers on our, on our computer system. They still got to go to the senior center, but we're like, pay us next time you come. So we'll get it worked out, um, but it is new for us as well, but we're getting there. But I thought it was positive, nobody said anything negative today, and, and I hate giving up twenty bucks as much as the next person, but as a city, we put a lot of value in that twenty dollars.
Well, so instead of, instead of doing all the other, can we just put the donation thing on the water bill to see if somebody wants to, just to help Christie and them out?
It won't be an automatic line. I mean, but we can, as new people come in, we can ask them if they would like that, and then we could put something out, maybe Pedro can put something out and say, if you'd like to donate, then contact us, and we can put it on an individual who wishes to do that. We've also, I've also talked with Christie about, um, that's something that we're going to work on in the next couple of months, different ways to pay at the, at the rec center, and that will be an option if they wanted to donate for something or even one of the events, there would be a way to donate for the events. We currently do get a few donations here and there for the seniors. We do have a, a small balance in the donations fund for senior center, and, and through the years, um, month to month, some people just do make donations already.
Well, I'm sure that every little bit would help them out some, because I'm pretty sure you're on a tight budget.
It's a very tight budget, Ms. Valerie.
There you go, see, there.
Mary, Mary's been waiting patiently.
Yeah, I just had one other point to make, which is that every other department in our city, we do charge fees for non-residents. The library does charge fifteen, I think. I saw that on today, I looked it up.
They do?
If they don't, it's on our website.
They don't charge, do they, for the library?
For non-residents.
Do they, we don't charge non-residents for the library now, do we?
For the library? I'm not aware.
Well, I saw it online today, so if we don't, we need to correct that. So it wasn't in the, if you click on library, it was not in that information. I believe it was in the budget information where it talked about the different departments for our budget that we just passed. And it, there was some verbiage, quite a few paragraphs about the library. And it did say something about charging non-residents fifteen dollars a year. So if that's incorrect, we need to, we need to change that. So the library is probably the only department that, if in fact we don't charge. Okay. But we have, you know, fees for rental, renting things for, you know, the aquatic center, the rec center, non-resident fees, so.
I'm not aware of the fees, but I'll, Pedro had to take Ron back to the airport, so I'll get with him and tomorrow and have him check it, check that out.
Any other questions for Christie, because she, she loves this public spotlight. But you're, you're doing great, you're doing wonderful, you're very knowledgeable, that's why we pulled you out. Thank you, ma'am.
Wait, I did have one more thing. Sorry.
Okay.
No, I was, I was just wanted to tell you, thank you, I was very happy to hear that you said twenty dollars is, is the good place to start, because I was hoping that's what you would say. So thank you so much for backing that up.
You got it.
I want to throw something out real, real quick. I'm a numbers nerd, not on the level, not that Kim is a nerd, she's not a nerd, but she loves numbers, but I am a nerd. You're asking about non-residents and kind of where they come from, and we have, of course, two hundred and seventy-six non-residents, but then they come from about thirty-one zip codes. Now, it's probably, it's probably about four more than that, because I have one, one of my little categories is other, and they're actually out of state or way far, like Houston or something like that, the other side of the world. But thirty-one, uh, zip codes. Most of them are in the one or two, and a hundred and twenty-one came from one, uh, seven, six, one, seven, nine. But again, that's, that's a, a good chunk of Fort Worth to the west. And one, three, one, that's a good chunk of Fort Worth to the, to the east, so.
Thank you, Keith. But counsel, do we, this is a consideration action, do we want to take action? Do we want to table this? What would we like to do? What's counsel's pleasure?
Well, if Vicky, I mean, if Christie doesn't think that it needs to be done, maybe if we could just think of some way to put some kind of donation somewhere so that that can help the seniors out.
If we put that on the water bill like you were talking about?
Well, that's what Kim said.
Who gets the dubious duties of, of trying to shuffle that out?
Kim.
So, so let me understand, so this donation.
No, I mean, if somebody comes up and is wanting help because they can't afford twenty dollars a year, then the dollar coming off of the water bill, who's going to give them the money to pay their twenty dollars?
That, that's what I was struggling with, when you say.
Yeah.
Donation, where do you want the donation to go to?
The senior citizens.
Just the senior citizens, not towards paying.
Do you realize what all she does with the little money she has? Okay, so she, she does all those events, they do all the food, they do all this other stuff.
Yeah, I understand, what you had, you had us confused, because you said, we want a donation. What this was for was for non-residents. So, so when you said a donation, we're like, well, you're asking for a donation for Saginaw residents to help out non-senior citizens.
Okay.
So, so what you're saying is wipe that out. What you're saying is, let's do a donation just to help.
Yes, this is what I would like. I don't want any senior citizen to not be able to enjoy the last years of their life, and if they can't afford it, somebody else will pay for it. If they can get donations to help Christie in everything that they do, that would be awesome. And I don't care where they get them from, but.
So this would have.
This would not be a donation.
Every senior citizen in Saginaw can come to the senior citizen center, and they don't get charged anything. Okay, so that's good. So this donation wouldn't be to pay them a fee, it would be to loan her out, or it would help us do other, other activities. Okay, that's what they're talking about.
You're actually going to, and give money to somebody that doesn't live in Saginaw so they can come to our rec center.
No, that's not what she's asking for, I'm saying that's what I haven't.
Yeah, it is.
The three people that came up and talked to me did not live in Saginaw. They could afford their bill, but they said some other people could not. And I'm sorry, but I have a very tender heart, whether you believe it or not. And so when they said it, I asked around, how many people came from, out of Fort Worth that could not afford to come to our center? I didn't know it was that big of a deal, but I just thought that maybe out of the kindness of somebody's heart, I was going to do a grant, but I was like, then when they said six hundred something, I was like, okay, we can't go that far.
Yeah, but didn't they say, what'd you say, there was two hundred and something people?
Two seventy-six non-residents, that was, that was mid-December.
So.
So Christie said we don't have that problem.
Why am I going to give money to somebody that lives in Saginaw?
Okay, but Christie said we don't have that problem, so that's okay. But can we not do something to help the senior citizens? She does a lot for the seniors, and they don't have a lot of money, they have a very tight budget.
Well, one of the things I was looking at when, after you actually stewed on it a little bit over the weekend, is do a hardship waiver, that if somebody doesn't live in the city, they can just fill out their name, just say that they have a hardship, we don't have to do a background check or anything with them. People have, you know, pride and dignity, they're only going to ask for it if they need it.
But she said they already do that, and they haven't had one single person. So again, we're trying to solve a problem that's not a problem.
That's not a problem.
So let, let's do this, we got two things going on here. One, let's take care of this, and I'm absolutely, I would, I'll be honest with you, I, I would support a, just a general donation to our senior city, call it a senior citizens fund, just a general donation. It doesn't have to go to, it, it's, they get to use it to do extracurricular activities for our senior citizens.
That works.
And.
That works.
Most senior citizens don't. Yeah, right. So I, I would be there. But mayor, what I'd recommend, we, we first vote on whether or not we want to.
No, we don't want to change it now, because, well, I'll make it, okay, so I make a motion that we don't change the amendment to the master fee schedule.
And since we're taking no action.
Okay, no action.
Do we need a, a motion to take no action?
Okay.
Okay, so we're.
There's going to be no action on that part.
Right. The next thing, do we want to take action on the donation fees?
Yes, that's what I would like to do.
Make the motion off.
Can, can we do that if it's not on the agenda? Can we do that if it's not on the agenda?
Can we do that if it's not on the agenda, but it's connected to? Okay, Janice, can you put it on the next agenda, and we'll make a motion? How's that?
So no action, no action necessary.
Okay, no action for this. I'm sorry, Christie.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm soft-hearted. That's the way it works.
No, thanks for the information, Christie. We appreciate it. I'm moving forward. Item eight, 2022 work plan review to 23 work plan feedback. City manager Gabriel.
Yeah. So a couple of years back, the mayor pro tem, and this sticks in my memory. She said, you know, when you give presentations and maybe it was me personally, maybe it was staff as a whole, you need to, you need to show us more things. And I thought, you know, that's really wise because pictures tell a better story. So I'm going to go over our work plan projects. Happy New Year to y'all. We had a really, really good 2022, got a lot accomplished. And then I'll go over some suggestions I've received from, from you for the 23 work plan. So we kind of talked about it with the, the survey, but the work plan are the priorities that the city council chooses and sets. So this will come to you, and these are your own, these, these come from you and to you for action as a, as a resolution, as has been done in past years. And that's kind of, in addition to the day-to-day work of the city, these are the priorities for, for staff to accomplish. So what is, Keith can flip through. So project Belt Mill Public Space Planning. Over the course of the year, we have acquired almost seven acres of open space, fee entitled, land that we own, in Belt Mill for some public use. The most recent of which was, was when I was gone in December, but the city council approved incentive agreement for 2.2 acres, which is, if you kind of look in the upper left corner, we'll have kind of an L-shaped tract of land of about seven acres for some public purpose. So then the question is, well, what are seven acres? What's a good comparison? William Houston Park is about seven acres. So if you think of anything that is located at William Houston, we could put it up there in Belt Mill. It could stay green grass. We could do a facility. We could do a playground. There was some discussion in the past about athletics fields. You know, we have a lot of desire for athletics fields, so something fun to, to look forward to. Next slide. And I will notice when I was driving in this morning, the ponds, that'll be the entry of Belt Mill, they're pouring the sidewalk around the pond, so that's pretty cool. That'll be part of the connected trail system within that development. So that'd be fun to look forward to. Our bond projects, again, to, to play off what, what Ron mentioned, we're doing more streets and sidewalk work in the past few years than we have in the city's future. I think maybe we need to do a better job of letting people know. So Knowles Phase One is under construction, as y'all are aware. That was selected as being the first phase because of, of drainage concerns, to the mayor's point. So the north section of Knowles, the vast majority of the cost, maybe if Trenton is an able engineer, he, he would remember off the top of his head the percentage of the storm sewer. I'm going to say it's 60% for the segment argument, but.
Didn't somebody say it's a storm sewer with a street attached to it, basically?
That's a fair, yeah. That's a fair description. It's a big storm sewer, so streets like Leatherman, Joe, John Kennedy, they, they flood. And because of that improvement, will be drastically improved. Now, because you can't always win, I got a, a comment from council member Tucker about, hey, can you talk to somebody about Knowles? And I responded, hey, here's the good news, we're going to fix it. Here's the bad news, it's going to take a little while, so bear with us. So people have complained about the construction, but thankfully it's, it's under construction. We had a little update about our library senior center. It's under design, which was bond money the council approved this past calendar year. We should go to construction and break ground early this year. So they're reviewing cost estimates to get it within the budget and it'll be really exciting to, to break ground soon.
Will you remind us, Knowles Phase One, how much county money are we getting?
So we will get 50% match, which is three and a half million.
Three and a half million, free money from the county.
That's correct. That's a great, great point, Mayor, to highlight. Next project came out of our comprehensive plan update, which the city council adopted and approved in March of 22. So it identified some vacant parcels that may potentially need to be rezoned to comply with the future land use plan. So that came for council action at the previous meeting. It was tabled to a, a future date. I'll just mention that if the city council would like to rezone that to neighborhood mixed use, as a comprehensive plan recommends, great. If the city council wants to take no action, that's fine too. It's, it's up to the city council.
One thing, a question came up. Could we make sure that Abra sends out that presentation to the council?
Yes, yep. We can, we can get that information out. I will add that, and I put this in my summary, that the rookie on the team, council member Feligee, added some in the neighborhood mixed use zoning district, limits on densities and setbacks, which would prevent, I think the concern with some of the vacant parcels is that it'll become, you know, really dense, you know, apartments, what have you. It can't happen with that, that zoning classification if it's rezoned to that. Would also encourage things that you hear from residents that people want, like neighborhood type shops, coffee shops, that sort of thing. Go to any place you enjoy shopping. I promise you, there's going to be apartments or homes or townhomes pretty close by because retailers and, and business owners want the comfort of knowing that people are close by so that there's foot traffic and, and businesses are, are successful. Next one.
So, hold it, Gabe.
Yes, sir.
Two questions I hear. One is, we, we did approve this rezoning, this new classification.
Correct.
So I wasn't here, but I watched on, on the boob tube, so to say. And it got tabled at, at the request of the, I forget the lady's name. Yeah. So when's it coming back?
So my understanding were, was there was some changes that may have to go or, or requests that may have to go back through P and Z for recommendation and back to the council. So probably within a month or so.
Month or so?
For action, yeah.
Okay. That's a long time.
Sure, but keep in mind, keep in mind that everything that goes to the planning and zoning commission requires notification 15 days.
15, okay. Got you. So then, then my next question on this is, since this was part of the work plan and this new classification got approved, how long is it going to take us in 2023 to where we reclassify everything into this new zone or at least comes before us to, to get that done across the city?
So the, the answer is it depends on the city council. We can bring the vacant parcels that are zoned in a different classification to the city council and recommend that if you rezone to comply, but.
So how long is it going, I mean, again, it's not, you all bring it to us, we yea or nay it.
Yeah, so this is the first batch of parcels. I believe there were 12 because a couple of, or maybe 11, a couple of the property owners already had projects.
Yeah, started.
Started. So we said, okay, we're not going to rezone that.
Well, no, I thought we were going to rezone those, but we were going to grandfather them in. So if the business ever went under, they moved it, then they would fall underneath the new zoning. That's the way it was explained when I was listening on the.
Sure, we can do that.
And I think that's part of the reason why it was tabled.
Yeah.
To go back, because there had to be some verbiage changed in it.
Yeah. Outside of this batch of, of vacant parcels, 12, there's really not many undeveloped parcels left, to my knowledge. The biggest would be next to Saginaw High School, which will be a planned development. Levon White Track, we call it, or future Western Center development. Yeah, I think we pretty well would have rezoned to comply with the.
So we, we expect then that the majority of these 12 to be wrapped up by the end of first quarter?
Oh, yeah. I think so. Yeah. I don't think, whatever text amendment, I think that would come back. And again, the action item is dependent on the city council.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and just one thing, if you heard, we talked, I spoke with Abra at lunch and she said that a couple of developers she's talked to and since then, they were opposed to it because they didn't know what it's about. But since then, after she talked to them, they're now in favor, or they're okay with it.
Yeah, but even at, even at the meeting when they went, a couple of them said, yeah, now that we've heard the presentation, we're okay with it.
And one thing I would say to the, the average person, zoning is quite confusing. Thankfully, we have attorneys to guide us through the intricacies, but that doesn't mean that by rezoning all these parcels, they're going to develop tomorrow. That just means at some point when the property owners sell, that this is what would be allowed for development. So, yeah. We held a city show and tell in a couple spots at the Training Grain Festival. We had almost every, well, working in, in booths, we had every department represented, including the fire department, which the fire chief used to refer to the fire department as America's favorite or America's heroes. Saginaw's favorite or Saginaw's heroes, the library, sir. So you need to step your game up. You've got, you've got some room for improvement, but.
I see, the PD got some pretty good numbers on that survey.
PD got good numbers too, and they're about ready to join the, the puppy race with, with the fire department. So things are looking up. No, really fun to interact with the public. You can see pictures from informal question and answer type events we've held at farmer's market and then Training Grain. So that was, that was a lot of fun. Next one. I won't cover this. Ron just covered our city customer satisfaction survey. Other than to say, there's a lot of good suggestions that could come out as work plans. Love to hear your thoughts. Code enforcement, so code enforcement, as, as has been done in past years, we identify a focus area. They kind of do a, a survey of that area in the hopes that by concentrating efforts, we can make progress. So we made good progress in Rancho North. One thing, when we have enforcement actions related to minimum property standards, it's good to not just, you know, have the stick approach. We have a carrot now that the city council approved, which is the home improvement program. So when code enforcement staff meets people out in the field that may need help, we can offer them incentives to improve their, their home. So we're excited about that program. I think Larry's in the audience. He'll regret coming to council meetings now, but I think we had at least one person interested in the home improvement, right?
We've had one interested. We just don't have, he's headwarming the.
Hasn't turned, okay. So there's some interest. And I think, you know, like many things, if you'll remember when we started our building improvement grant, you get one and then it starts snowballing and one is successful and we keep going with others, so.
Out of this focus area, do you have numbers? I mean, like, and do you have it divided between like things that were minor versus things that were major? How many, you know?
So there's 300 parcels there and currently I think there's 173 violations that they found in those six streets involved in there.
Was that 170, was that 173 violations on separate parcels or?
Yeah, separate parcels. But there was actually only about, there was actually only about 75 parcels that had violations out of those. And out of that 75, we're looking at 95% compliance right now.
Okay.
We're, we're getting there.
And can you give us some example of what some of the violations were?
A lot of them are, you saw, that was important, you saw the fences can do, prepare. A lot of fence issues. We're still having non-compliant, painting the houses, keeping the houses up. The biggest pushback we're getting right now is people don't have the funds. That is the one thing we're hearing just about a lot of these. They just don't have the money. So that's, you know, that's some, obviously it's, we have to work with it. The results don't get done instantly, but if you'll, I, I think you can sit around now that you're standing in the river.
And Rancho North, doesn't it typically have, where are the older folks that's lived here their whole life? Yeah, they don't want to sell. Yeah, that's what that's from.
So if they don't have money and stuff, are we giving them a little paper when it says, hey, if you, you know, I mean, I'm sure you can tell the people who you know is going to be struggling and, and encouraging them to.
I talked to Bree on that program already. The problem is, and then they've got a good legitimate point. If they don't have the money to fix the house now, they don't have the money to start the program because that's what it's based on. The incentive is what they spent and what it raises the value.
They don't have the money first to do it. You have to, because the way it's set up is that they fix it, they get it approved, they fix it, and then we give some bounty back.
Can we reach out? Sorry, this.
Helping people needs help, I think.
Can we look into like NGOs? I mean, we, we got some churches. I mean, I don't know, Habitat for Humanity, I'm not real familiar. I know they build new houses.
Actually, Tarrant County has a couple of programs we might be able to get involved in. The community development folks in Tarrant County might be a good one to, to reach out to.
And you know, somebody told me that Sherwood, Williams and somebody else, they offer paint to people that can't afford it too. We might look into that also.
Good suggestions, yeah.
No bright pink or orange, please. We have a yellow and a blue house that drive me crazy every time I drive past it. I go. No, 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 that's too much.
Thanks, Lisa. Yes, sir. So the next one is code enforcement recommendations for changes. We completed one after I believe it was tabled twice by the city council to allow carports by SUP. So one thing I would say, and, and this was brought up as a potential project for 23, ordinances are kind of like unwinding a bollie yarn. When you pull one string, it affects something else. We do have some other ordinances related to parking and our infrastructure standards that are pretty close to come in for council review and approval. So we've made good progress. We've got more areas to explore. And I think that would be helpful if we do that in 23 to kind of identify an area. So say, okay, code enforcement type ordinances or minimum property standards instead of saying everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be very good to, to pick them and prioritize.
Priorit, yes. And we can, whatever your priority would be, we could. Have we had any carport? I know we had some carport requests, but when people understand the requirements, to my knowledge, I don't know that we've had any.
We've had two. I just hopped us into this one.
Okay.
We've had two inquiries, but they have, the, the pushback we got was the $750 fee for the issue.
Right. So it, I mean, it's its own change. And I, the one that came to my knowledge was somebody wanted to install like a prefab metal one, which would pretty much be prohibited. So it needs to match the exterior of the home.
Needs to be like the example you got on there.
Correct, yep.
I looked at it, I'm like, wow, I'd like to have that.
Yeah, there you go.
You can have that. It starts at $750.
So you, you might remember, we had a, our cultural event at the Training Grain Festival. The Gambia Texas Association joined us along with our sister city delegation. We had dancing. We had Gambian food. Pretty, pretty fun time. Next one. We have a new pavement management system. This is a picture of the, the, I don't know what we'd call it, the vehicle that collects all the data. So now we have a, a way to determine, sort of a objective way to determine pavement condition, to make decisions and recommendations in the future. So I think Trent and Randy are pretty excited to keep going with that. We have, and it, back to Ron's point, I think we need to do a better job of letting people know what we're doing. So we're doing a lot of street work. Now, if you don't live near Knowles or use Knowles, then maybe you don't believe that statement. But the county just came in and did the north section of Knowles from Park Center to Bailey Boswell in like 15 minutes or something crazy.
And it's very nice.
It was amazing.
I've drove it twice and it's very nice. No bumps, no chuckles, no nothing.
It, it was great. And then they did Rockledge and were there any others? Yeah, so we're, we're making good progress. And again, those are things we need to remind residents of that.
Now, we're taking. That area, y'all should watch out for, because now that you don't have to dodge the knot holes, they're going to be speeding down through that little strip right there.
So we're actually taking this data now and feeding it in to our, like, say in 2023, using it to help guide us of which streets were.
Correct. Actually, these two streets that we just did were recommended in that management program as doing the building overlay. County just got a brand new million-dollar machine that they used in Saginaw first time. So it turned out really, really nice. Been been by, drove down it, it's really good.
So does it, this new machine fancy thing, I'm, I'm, they're doing it, are we getting it at a, they're getting the pavement done at a discount?
It's, well, it's not, it's cheaper because you don't have to do a total reconstruct.
Okay.
Yeah, thankfully.
Machine is covering the cost.
Thankfully, we're close to the yard, so I think we get first dibs hopefully.
Yes, it took them two days to do Rockledge, three days to do Knowles or Knowles.
And it's nice.
Part finished.
Do we have a bunch of other streets that we identified to do that on?
In fact, in the morning, I, I talked to the county today. They're going to take a look at South Knowles from McElroy to Longhorn, assess it and see what we can do with it.
Thank you.
So, so Gabe, where's our PR, PR guy? Get him out there, get him to videotape this and stick it on the web so that citizens can see it.
No, I, I agree. I, I think, I think that's the one thing. One, one of the things that I've taken away from Ron is we just need to do a better job of selling our progress and letting people know. Pictures tell the story better. So yeah, what Randy mentioned, I guess. So yeah, what Randy mentioned, I guess that was a complaint we received. You know, can we do anything on Knowles? So it'd be McElroy, South to Longhorn until we reconstruct it. Because it's planned to be rebuilt this year. So I think the county's going to try to help us out to just hold on until it's in concrete.
We have a new county commissioner now. Are we going to get the same, let's say, good treatment as we have gotten in the past? Have we been spoiled?
Nothing will replace JD.
I think so. I talked to Doug today. He had a meeting with him last week and no changes, business as usual. He likes our relationship with Saginaw, so. And he's a Saginaw guy.
Yeah, my understanding, he's a Boswell guy, so that helps.
See, there you go, right there. Boswell, Saginaw, right there in the same bucket.
And I believe his uncle was your classmate, so. Charlie. Yeah, so use that to your favor.
Oh, okay. All right.
Home renovation incentive program. So that may have been three workshops and discussions. It was finally approved in December. We're happy to kick that off and kind of get that advertised and get some projects going. I think it'd be really well received.
So the home renovation, how much did we say we would fund that for this year?
I think we, do you remember? I think it was $50,000, $25,000 in the utility fund and $25,000 in the general fund.
It's 12.
Sorry.
12.5 in the general fund, 12.5 in the enterprise fund.
So if we were to get a whole lot more applications, we would bring them back to the city council and say, hey, can we increase? Because I think it'd be, it'd be valuable. Police Department accreditation. So the police department has been working on pursuing Texas police chief's accreditation. This is a lot of paperwork, at least on the front end, submitting policies to review to the Texas Police Chief Association. The next step is we're waiting for a site review and we don't have a definite date because my understanding is the site reviewers are backlogged and have been for a couple of years. But at this point, our department has done everything necessary at the moment. And then I guess I may defer to the chief, but I think we'll get a site visit maybe in 23. Is that fair?
We're hoping for that. Assistant Chief Batavinnick is going to the project managers' training for the Texas Police Chiefs Association to make sure that we're still in compliance with the new rules. They've added some additional policies. Hope to have everything 100% turned into them. It's really just a waiting game. During COVID, they didn't do any site visits or audits. And so they're playing a big game to catch up now, trying to get caught up with all the agencies that have applied.
So happy to report, I believe the new fire station should be operational in April or so. Is that fair? So once the existing fire station on Saginaw Boulevard is vacated, city council approved an incentive agreement with local favorite to create a destination, restaurant and entertainment venue known as the Station at Saginaw. So we're all really excited. We've been in touch with the local favorite folks. Once the operations are out of the fire station, they're going to get their architects in, do site assessments, that sort of thing, and get started. So we're, we're really excited. Twisted Root is really good if you haven't been there before. Then I think it's our second to last project. So after much discussion, the city council approved becoming a partner member with the Northeast Tarrant Chamber of Commerce. So we're looking forward to having Northeast Tarrant Chamber of Commerce have a bigger presence in Saginaw. And then we've, we're going to let our business community know that we would encourage them to check them out and pursue membership if they're so inclined.
So we approved this. So when, when will the ball actually get rolling?
So I think.
I talked to Jack, the president of the Northeast Tarrant Chamber, back in mid-December or early December. We decided to wait till January, just with holidays and people being off and things like that. So they're, they're going to, I guess, submit the invoice to us. And then we're going to start moving forward, beginning really today or tomorrow.
So are we going to have a big, I mean, it needs to be something to kind of jumpstart it. We're going to have like a meeting, some big announcements? I know that there's a.
That's the plan. I'd also like to, and I think it would be really good for him, for us to have a potential workshop with the council and let him talk to you. And he can answer a lot of questions that I can't. He's the expert. And he's been doing this a long time and he's really good. What they're going to bring, what they're going to provide for our businesses are things that we can't, we can't do with our one man economic development shop.
The last project was the Feral Cat program. So where we left that project was the city council approved a facility assessment to look at future needs for a future shelter facility. That has just kicked off. I believe the firm is going to do site visits here. Is it this month or? What we'll end up with that is a recommendation of a future facility. And then I think ultimately we're going to have to figure out a way to pay for that facility. So whether that becomes a bond project or we, you know, say we want to fundraise, what have you, that's the end result of the facility assessment. So that's 22 in a nutshell. The last and maybe for this evening, more important business is to talk about 23 projects. And these are the recommendations.
Excuse me, Gabe. Real quick, before we move on.
Sure.
One of the comments that I have about your presentation and an awful lot of work went into this and I appreciate that. But along with the pictures, what I'd like to know that's not obvious here is could you put a progress bar on each of these charts, each of the projects? So how many of these projects are complete and how many of these need to roll over to the 2023 work plan?
Sure.
And the other thing is, what is the cost to date for each of these projects? I know we approved the budget, but I'd like to know if we were below cost or, you know, that doesn't have to be on the chart, but I'd like to at least know what's the type, the cost to date for each of these projects.
Okay.
So off the top of your head, do you know how many are going to migrate into the 23 work plan?
So the ones that are incomplete, let me flip through, would be the city initiated rezoning. That is outstanding.
The bond projects, right?
The bond, so phase one of Knowles is on track and design is on track. Future phases would be coming forward. So that will be wrapped up in short order. That may be it, honestly.
The Feral Cat program?
Yeah, so I think the, the way we left it with the city council was we've reviewed the, reviewed the issue in depth and the next step was the assessment. So the facility assessment is currently underway. That will end up with a recommendation to the city council. Hey, here's the facility and here's the cost. And then there's some decisions that need to be made related to that.
I would think the Feral Cat program would be part of the greater, the recommendation I had for solving the stray animal problem.
Sure. Yeah, we can, if you want to talk about that, we can. We can talk about the 23.
It seems like to me that would fit more in there because that's what, a TNR trapdoor release, that's what you're trying to do. You're trying to resolve your.
So I think the way we left it is we've got space limitations and we have staff and budget limitations. So we're staying as is until we know what our future facility might be. That's essentially where we are. And that's a little bit of a chicken or egg thing because at some point in the future, we've got to address the public works facility. The long-term idea is to move public works and code enforcement staff next door, renovate the library once it's vacated. Again, the library is higher rated than the fire department, which, you know, step up your game.
I think it's just maybe, I think it would fit more into that, like I say, the basically the, our stray animal problem.
Yeah.
Because that's what part of that is, is to solve that.
So I'll read, and again, this is a list for discussion, not set in stone, subject to change. So here are the ideas I've received from, from y'all to date for 23 projects. Employee suggestion or incentive program, community fishing pond assessment, planning, bond project, Knowles Phase Two and Library Senior Center construction, salary compression and market study, and the future public works and animal shelter needs. Reviewing city ordinances. Now, like I mentioned, we would maybe need a focus area on the specific area of ordinances. Nikki just, Councilmember Lawson just mentioned developing a stray animal, how we're going to address the stray program. And then, let's see, parks assessment, identifying the following. Evaluation or recommendation of equipment replacement for each park. Recommendation of a pond with fishing and other activities. Evaluation of tying walking trails together. Address comments from the park's master plan and consideration for park areas in new developments. So that is.
And then we're going to add survey, response to the survey, develop a plan, response to the survey.
Yes. What we're going to do with it, yeah?
And community communication. No, I think that needs to be a separate one.
Yeah.
You know, and I really like, you know, what Nick was talking about, having videos that we can post on Facebook and.
Sure.
Different departments talking about, you know, progress that's being made.
Once again, they like to look at it.
No, I agree. I think.
People don't like to read anymore.
Well, I read an article one time that we're in the Twitter age. So, you know, people only respond to 140 characters or less and/or pictures. So.
And I think some of this, because they don't know how to read very well anymore. Just saying, I'm just saying, they just don't, yeah.
Back to your idea of pictures.
Video communication and then I don't survey, what are we calling that? Survey.
What's a good way to, response to the survey, city response?
I mean, I think you could pick several projects.
Priorization with a survey.
Survey.
Priority, action.
Action plan as a result of the survey. That good?
Survey, action plan. Yeah, I think that's a good list. If you have any other project ideas, you know, the goal is to get a resolution to you at the next meeting or the meeting after and.
Well, one of, one of the things that I'd like to see, at least from the council, since you said you've taken our ideas, is I'd like to see us kind of put together, you know, a description of what each of these items are and if we even able to accomplish it this year. And are we looking at, you know, $10,000 less, $10,000 to $100,000 or more than $100,000 price range for these projects? Again, I think that's offers some transparency to our citizens so they understand where we're coming from and can look at the financial impact. And it gives us something to shoot for to try to beat, come in under budget.
Something I'd like to see too is, you know, being the newbie, if we could get an update, you know, we get our weekly updates from you, but once a month, if we could get an update on the work plan.
Yeah, so what I do now is I send the monthly update to the city council as part of the monthly report that everybody gets. Happy to do that. Some of these projects, they don't move. I know you can't necessarily lend it to a nice beautiful Gantt chart. They, you may have no action until December and we get our last couple acres. But yeah, I think establishing some milestones and when we have pictures.
That's what Gantt charts are for, is not to, is to map things out, not to hold you accountable for what you set up as a preliminary idea, but to help you set up a map and then track what's going on.
Sure.
It's a communication tool.
Yeah. No, it's, it's great feedback. Trent's an engineer, so maybe he can chart it up. I love Gantt charts.
I love Gantt charts.
Probably got an A in Texas A&amp;M, so. Well, thank you again.
So Gabe, I got one more question. This feral cat in the picture, are you the one that put the hat on it? I want to know who, who was brave enough to put a hat on that cat.
I want to make him, I have very, way cuter feral cats than that one.
Listen, you know my thoughts on animals. They belong outdoors. Up to and including.
I just don't want Nick to get involved with the cat again, so I'm trying to keep you out of that, out of home water.
Hey, y'all, I learned more about feral cats that evening than I knew in my entire life.
Everyone wanted to know. All right, thank you, Gabe. Appreciate it. Item number nine, Board of Commission update. Janice England, City Secretary.
Yes, Mayor and Council, we wanted to take just a few minutes to update you on the status of some of the boards and commissions. And we've got some vacancies. Back in November, the council approved several ordinances that updated the terms to where they were all uniform. And some of the boards, the length of terms changed. We added some members to some of the boards. So we've been working, or I've been working since then, getting our, everything changed around. We'll be getting the website updated here in the next week. And we've started working with the staff liaisons that are on each board or work with each board regarding the training that is now required for each of these boards for the Open Meetings Act and the Public Information Act. We're working on that. Right now, we have six of our boards and committees that have vacancies. And those are the Advisory Recreation and Parks Board, which has seven members and two alternates, has currently a vacancy for place one and alternate number two is vacant. We have the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee with nine members and two alternates. They have one vacancy for place number eight. And as you're aware, some of those positions have to be specific, but this particular position is not. Have to be anything out of the ordinary than just a citizen. The Board of Adjustment has an alternate number two vacancy. The Diversity and Inclusion Committee is 15 members and two alternates. When the new ordinance was approved, before that, we had accepted people that weren't actually residents. We had some people, a lady from the school. We had some different ones in the surrounding community that weren't actually residents. So those three people on it now do not qualify to be on the board. We've had those three that don't meet it. And then we have three that have resigned for various reasons since then. And this, this is one of our boards that they had a meeting scheduled a few weeks ago and I believe they had to cancel it because they couldn't get a quorum together. A quorum for that one would be eight people now. The Keep Saginaw Beautiful Board is now seven members and two alternates. We've had several resignations. And so on that, we have two regular members that are left. So we have five regular member positions open and two alternates open. So they can't even call a meeting until we can get some people appointed to that board. The last one is the library board, which is now seven members and two alternates. Before, that was just seven members. So we've added two alternates and those are the two vacancies on, on that board. So that brings us to a total of 19 vacancies that need to be filled. The last month or so, we've gotten five applications from citizens. And you should all have a copy in front of you of these people that are interested and expressed an interest on being appointed to various boards. We wanted you to be aware of these vacancies tonight. And we've been, Pedro's put some things out on Facebook and the website to try to get some people interested. But we do need to try to fill some of these. If y'all know of anybody, if there's anybody listening at home tonight, you can go on our website and fill out an application and you can put which boards you're interested in. Or if you're not a particular board you're interested in, you can just say where you're needed. So we appreciate anybody's response. If you have any questions, give us a call.
I have a question. Why did so many quit on the beautification board? Is there a reason?
I don't know. I don't, I don't talk to all of them. I get the emails showing that they've resigned. I don't know if, if maybe some of them might have been scared off. That was a total volunteer committee beforehand. So now it's a little more structured. So I don't know if that might have weighed into some of their decisions or not. I couldn't speak for those people.
And that, that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm sure it's due to the restructuring.
How hard can it be?
It's not. I mean, it's just before they, they, there wasn't term limits and things like that.
Some of these boards were, were a little more informal.
Yeah.
Probably than.
What I was going to say is I, I got this last night, got to digging through my stuff after getting back into town. And I, I took, I took what you had and I took what, and I put it on all the other Facebook pages out there. And I took the things and put it out there too. So hopefully, I'll keep an eye on it.
So, hopefully, I'll keep an eye on it.
Okay. We appreciate that.
Send them to me, and we'll just, I, I believe that if we let the citizens know and we push it out there, we should be able to fill it.
Yeah.
Definitely I'll push. The ones that's like alternates, that's the ones that's critical, you know, like Keep Saginaw Beautiful Committee, I'm sure we can get that filled in pretty short order, you know, let citizens know what the committee's about, and, you know. Should, shouldn't be that hard to fill, I hope.
Shouldn't. And we, hopefully, we've got some new residents maybe that'll be interested and be involved.
Can they go on our website and say, Keep Saginaw Beautiful, and what, everything that's entitled to it is on our website?
Yes, each, each board has a page, and it, it explains what the board does and how many people are on the board, and I believe it has the ordinance that creates them, I think. So, hopefully, we can just address.
We can just refer them to our city.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do we need to take any action tonight?
No, we just wanted to let you be aware of it, so if you know of anybody that's interested, or some of this stuff on Facebook, could just share it or to get the word out.
Okay. And please get the word out, if you have any interest, please contact the City Secretary. We'd love to have you get involved. More people, the better.
Are we posting these board meeting dates on our city website, I mean, on our city Facebook page?
I believe so, yes.
It's on the website.
It's on the website, but, you know, if it's, you know, we've got a Keep Saginaw Beautiful meeting coming up, you know, next week, that's real visible on Facebook.
So, want to add that to Facebook?
Usually algorithm.
Sure, come on.
So, when it comes to the algorithm on Facebook or on your social media, the more you post, the algorithm is going to make you be less visible. So, when, that's why we sort of kind of pick and choose what we actually want to post. Usually, kind of the standard is about seven to 10 posts a week. That's what we're trying to keep it. But, what we, we could look into is maybe just do one major one in the beginning of the month, but everything that goes on there. It's also in the newsletter as well that just got sent out every beginning of the month. We put all of those meetings on there as well. But, yeah, something we could definitely look into.
All right. Thank you, Peter. All right, anything else on this, folks? All right, I do not believe we have executive session tonight. Hallelujah. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mayor Proton, Mrs. Cocker, please cast your votes. Motion carries at 7:52. We adjourn. Thank y'all.